Welcome to the October 6, 2022 Parma City School Board Education Meeting. Please stand and pledge their names.
My荣幸 To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, God, and individual liberty, justice, and justice for all.
Each month.
Mrs. Roth.
Present.
Mrs. Carpus. Mr. Price. Mr. Ruda.
Present.
Mr. Vaughn.
Present. Dr. Smiley, can you please confirm that this meeting is currently being livestreamed?
Yes, it is.
And as usual, can you please monitor the livestream throughout the meeting? And if there is a problem, we can reply.
Yes, we will.
Thank you. And sort of information or Dr. Smiley?
Sure, actually, we're going to turn it over to our principals. We have not done this in a couple of years, largely due to COVID and how COVID sort of made us go through a lot of different steps just to educate, you know, folks in whatever format it called for at the time. But now that we're back into what we think should be as close to a normal school week as possible, we wanted to come back and have principals present just a little bit of the action plans that they're using to improve their schools. So each of the next approximately 10 meetings, we will have two or three, tonight I believe is the only night with three presentations, each very succinct. Our principals are very focused on several data points that they're going to explain as strengths and weaknesses. They also have a series of people here to recognize, and we're very happy that we have outstanding classified and outstanding certified staff members here that will earn some recognition, well-deserved recognition. And we will start this evening with our Greenbrier Middle School Principal, Jill Schisler.
Yeah, yeah. I just wanted to say real quick before she gets started, just before she gets started, that it's like, it's really kind of nice to see Mason out here while I'm planning a meeting, so staring at the camera. Thanks for coming. I know it's going to be a short time.
Of course.
But I appreciate you being here.
All right, guys. Oh, sorry, Steve.
No, you're good.
Come on.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thanks for everyone coming tonight, welcome, and congratulations to those who are being awarded. I want everyone to take a look at that picture up there because the person that we will be giving out an award to actually made that happen, so keep that in mind. What I've given the board here and Sean and Charlie are notes to help you understand when my colleague Michelle Cook gets up here and really starts talking over your head a little bit. She does. Actually, no. We did this so you can understand when we start going into acronyms, you can kind of understand what we're talking about a little bit, so. Okay, so the first thing we're going to get on here, go ahead, Pam, thank you, is I'm going to give you three achievement strengths of Greenbrier Middle School. That's, they're not the only three, but these are the ones that we chose. Amy Fink and Michelle Konesny did a great job of helping me put this together, so I want to thank them, and Amy's going to be honored tonight here, too. So the first strength is we made tremendous growth in overall, in almost all of our subgroups. If you see the graph, if you can actually see it, I mean, we really blew out the water. And I'm really proud at that point because since I've been at Greenbrier for six years, growth, we've always done exceptionally well in growth, and that's what it's about. It's about moving the individual child forward. And we're very passionate about that. So that was one of our strengths. How we got to that strength and the things that the teachers and the staff do on a daily basis is all teachers have worked diligently to use short circle curricular assessments, that's hard for me to say, to analyze student strengths and weaknesses, and teachers have worked to close gaps with students who struggle with content and extend knowledge for those who demonstrated content mastery. In a nutshell, it's what Ms. Droppco says to us all the time. What do we want them to know? What are we going to do if they don't know it? What are we going to do if they do know it? And how do we drive instruction? That's how we drive instruction. So, first strength. Go ahead, Pam. That's it. That's it. I forgot that that comes up. Okay. Our second strength is we're very, very proud of our seventh grade honors math. They take the eighth grade Ohio State test math, and they have exceeded, if you can see that, eighty-nine percent, and the state average is forty-three. They exceeded it by that much, and we're very, very proud of that. We continue to do that, and that's a, that's a pretty big deal for us because it prepares those kiddos that are going up to Forge and Normandy for the following year. So we're pretty proud of that. How do we do that? It goes to our sixth and seventh grade teachers, prepare our honor students by teaching three years and two. By doing this, the students were prepared to take the eighth grade test in the seventh grade and ready to take Algebra I in the ninth grade. So it really sets up those high school students for success when we get up there, which we'll have a fact next year as well. And we do that through pacing and rhythm. Okay. And our last stra-, uh, one more? And our last is a concern of what we're doing, and I'm going to tell you right now, the wheels are not falling off the target of Greenbrier because we missed the state standard by eight tenths of a point to get three stars instead of two. So we feel pretty good. There's a room for improvement, absolutely, to where I just rule the world. We continue to push. We have an excellent assistant superintendent that tells us every day, this is what you need to do with fidelity, and I believe our teachers do a great job of that. So we will do that through our action steps, which are revamping our action plans to focus on priority standards. We'll work with our TBT, our teacher-based teams, they are every Thursday in middle school to examine those gaps and instruction related to the OST data, and of course, our math benchmark testing, okay? And we'll also work with our TBT, like I said, every Thursday to do item analysis. They'll deeper in, see what each individual learner is needing help with, and our teachers do a really good job of that. We will get better. So those are our achievements. Next is our resilient learner strengths, two, and then we'll do a concern. And I'm very proud of this. Our assistant principals with our PBIS committee do a great job. It's been a couple, a tough couple of years getting the kiddos back in and just that environment where it's structured again. We had all last year, and this year, we have really got some super nice kids in the building, and I think they're used to be back in, being back in school. So we were awarded last year the silver level for PBIS. We went from bronze to silver. And we met seventy-two percent of our indicators. An indicator, and I should have put that on there again, I'm sorry, is really like staff involvement and identification of students. There's a whole, whole working out that we have to meet. We met seventy-two percent of that for Tier Two, and those are children that we have specifically focused in on, okay? And our staff did a nice job. How did we do it? We did it by continuing our Tier One behavior supports, focusing on the three Rs, respect, responsible, ready to learn. And our teachers gave out five hundred and six, or five hundred and seventeen positive referrals in twenty-one, twenty-two. And then, of course, we do Student of the Month. That isn't always academically, we don't give it out just for academics. We give it out for growth mindset and a lot of other things, which I'll talk at the end. Our Tier Two behavior supports, check in and check out. We had fifty-one students do that last year. That means that a teacher will volunteer or a staff member, it doesn't matter, can take a child and they can check in with them weekly, daily, it doesn't matter, it's really up to that teacher and that relationship with that child. And we also had, we also mentored fifteen students, and those would be students that were identified in our Tier Two, maybe some, a little bit extra. And we run restorative circles, which are always helpful, and that's where we want to give back and change, change those behaviors. We had, our building has approximately a hundred and forty-five staff, teachers included. We had forty teachers volunteer to do this in staff. That's some good stuff. Our next strength for resilient learner is that check in and check out that I mentioned, and our mentoring program. Those are great things. When I was at Valley Forge, it was actually Dr. Schneider, myself, and Ms. Andrew Justine that got the Graduation Guardian Program going, still going on at Valley Forge. This is very similar to that. I'm very proud of that, even though, and I know Carl is as well. Forty percent of our staff members volunteered to participate, and again, that's excellent participation out of a building of a hundred and forty, around a hundred and forty-five staff. What's really neat is it's just not teachers. Scott, our head custodian sitting there in the front who would get an award, also helped mentor kids. That's good stuff. Okay? How did we do it? We did it through our action steps, requesting staff members to volunteer through a Google form. It was that simple. We monitored that, and then we meet with grade levels going over those forms for check-in and check-out procedures. Really kind of simple stuff, but I'll tell you what, it can make a big difference in a child's life. Okay? And lastly, our concern is how do we continue to monitor? Our teachers volunteered, they did a great job, but us collecting the data was something we need to improve upon. And thirty-seven point five percent were turning in data on a regular basis. We need to do that, and we will, I have zero doubt. So those are our achievement and resilient learner positives and concerns. Did I do one more? I missed that concern there. That's the action steps. Oh, that's the action steps. Thank you, see. Tier Two, check in, check out, our data needs to be collected, I went over that, I'm not going to read that to you again. Lastly, highlights of Greenbrier. I'm going to tell you right now, this is my thirty-first year in education and seven different districts in all that time, and by far the best teachers I have ever been around earning this district. We did not have to go outside to find anything, our resources are sitting right next to you. They are phenomenal, and I'm very proud of that. I get choked up on that, I usually don't get choked up. But our motto in our building, six years ago when we stepped in, was mindset is everything. You can do this. And that's for those adults walking through the door, as well as those kiddos coming through. We have one of the only staff culture playbooks that our BLT put together a couple of years ago of how we should be acting on the job and how we should be acting with our community and our students, and that, the students backed to us. Our BLT put that together. Positive relationships, pursuit of growth, and personal accountability, all life skills. And if anyone has ever been in our building, we have signs hanging all over the halls, not necessarily just for kids to reach up and get, which makes me constantly, yes, can you tell that bothers me? Is, one side of the sign says, do your job, and the other side says, I got your back. And anyone knows me, I'm a loyalist, and I believe that in every one of my staff members, our staff members excuse me, and in those, those kids that walk through that door. We've got your back, come in, do your job, we'll do ours, and you know what? It's going to be okay. So we feel pretty good about that. All right. Outstanding certified staff. Ms. Matowski, would you please stand up? Terry Matowski is an intervention specialist in the sixth grade. She is, leads our building as a team leader and our student council advisor. Terry does amazing things for our staff and students. She raises funds to supplement student rewards. She makes sure the lobby is always beautiful and welcoming, and she has constantly provided opportunities for students to lead and excel. Terry is a great leader, and we are extremely fortunate to have her. If you can remember back to that mural that's on the front of our building, she's the one who did that. She found someone to do it, paid her student council money. She's awesome. So Terry, thank you so much.
There we go.
Next up is Amy Fink. Amy is absolutely everyone's right-hand man in the building, and I mean everyone. This woman is phenomenal. She is a team leader, she is our math department chair, she's our BLT member, a BLT member, PBIS member, and our girls' basketball coach. No, you're not getting out of that. You have to do that. Amy is a district leader. If you have anyone up here, they know her, they know her well. She is not afraid to speak her mind and will always stand up for what's best for kids. She will help out in any way, and that includes her colleagues. She is the ultimate leader in our building, and Amy, you are invaluable to me, so I appreciate your presence. Thank you. Amy Fink. So classified staff, I was a little selfish with this. Usually we do, we are very, I'm all-encompassing, you know, I rarely make decisions on my own in that building because that's what makes us great, but I did choose these four people, and these two especially. And Scott Smolter, and I mentioned Scotty earlier, is our head custodian, and he has absolutely transformed our building inside and out. His pride in all he does as a parent, our teacher staff continue to praise him for his hard work and dedication to Greenbrier. Scott is one of the hardest-working and high-character young men that I know. Scott E. Rock. Thank you. Lastly, if you've been around Parma long enough, you know Julie Sisk. Julie is my head secretary, but Julie serves the entire building, and anyone who knows Julie's the principal of the building, and if you don't know that, she'll tell you. It's actually, Dr. Schneider and I got to hire Julie when she was first in the secretarial pool at Valley Forge, and she has come a long way and absolutely been valuable to me and to our staff. Julie works with myself and all the staff, she's constantly trying to make service better for students and families and our staff, and I personally am very appreciative of you, Julie. You rock, too. That's my staff.
Do you want a picture of all of us here?
Who would like to stand next to the tablecloth?
Come on, big guy. Got it. Got it. All right, ready? All right. One more. Congratulations.
We're going to see if there's any questions for Ms. Schisler before you get going.
Thank you.
Board, any questions for Ms. Schisler before we switch over to Hillside?
I do have a real quick comment. I said, I was thinking about, you were talking about the students slapping the signs. And the first thing that came into my mind was Notre Dame going through play like a champion sign, so I think those kids are actually, hey, I got your back, and I'm slapping a sign.
I'm going to have to disagree with that.
I was writing it down when I got called up here. No, excellent work, and I know that your, your team, I've seen you in action with your building, stood outside, watched you greet the kids. It's phenomenal what you've done over there, so thank you very much. Your staff is excellent, I tend to agree with that, that we don't have to go very far to get quality teachers. And I've always said that since day one into this, not this year, but that year, where I was sitting, that we have the best staff in the county, if not the state.
Surround yourself with me. Thank you.
I am sorry that I won't see your presentation, but I get to see it live in action every day, and we've been at the school now for, I think this is like our seventh year in a row with kids in the school, so we're pretty familiar with the Ossinmark. Just one more. Just one more. But she's the pistol, so I'm really sorry.
I have to. She's apologizing.
Mrs. Roth, Mr. Ruda, anything? Any questions?
Thank you for all you do. You and your staff make a Parma City Schools proud, so, and most of all, serving children and educating kids, so thank you.
Ditto. Yeah, I, yeah.
They are very excited to stay for the remaining two presentations as well and support of their colleagues, so thank you. Next will be Mrs. Cook. Check, please. From Hillside. We are very happy to move to our second presentation. This is Mrs. Cook from Hillside. She will introduce several members first half when she gets to the end, too, but we're very proud of their growth and looking forward to your presentation.
Thank you. So much of what was in the first presentation gave you a lot of the background information and what some of the things mean, so thank you, Julie, I mean Jill, for putting that all together. I will start with our strengths here for achievement. I am extremely proud of our staff. This is the red line that you see here for fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and if you wonder why it says eighth grade when we don't have eighth grade, it's because some of our seventh grade students are actually taking the eighth grade test because they're in honor. So we at Hillside are in the, have the red line, and as you can see, we have a four-star rating, which means that we have exceeded performance in all of those areas, all grades, all contents. We have surpassed state and district thresholds, so very proud of that achievement. How did we do that? I believe that it was from taking the time to stress all of the reading, writing, and discussing across all content areas that we really worked on last year. We also worked really hard on planning lessons with fidelity and linking everything back to the academic side of the playbook when we were planning those lessons, and then making sure that we are using our board-adopted curriculum with fidelity, and within that board-adopted curriculum, making sure that we are using the formative and summative assessments very consistently so that we can pull the data to know how our kids are doing and finding out, you know, where we need to put those interventions in and how to continue growing students. So our second strength that we have on our report card is our gap closing. So this measures the reduction in educational gaps for our student subgroups, and as you can see, the little red dots are where the state would like us to be, and we have surpassed, again, in all of the areas in our subgroups, so we received a five-star, again, because we significantly exceeded state standards in closing those educational gaps. Again, very, very proud of all of our staff because that involves absolutely everybody to move all those subgroups forward. Again, why, where, why did we get that? I believe it's because along with everything else I already stated from the first set of data, we are also using our map and OST data to identify those bubble kids, which means the kids who are not quite proficient, but they're just under making proficiency in those areas, and so really working with those kids to push them forward. We really focused on that. And then, you know, it's not all about academics, so we really did focus on our embrace-all club group that Mr. Armstrong puts together so graciously, and working on the inclusivity of our students because really it involves the whole child, and that was part of what we focused on last year as well. Again, it's not always academics, we've got to look at like the social, emotional side of our kids, too. So with all of our achievement that we are very proud of, again, just like Jill said, there's always room for growth, and one of the areas that I feel like we could definitely grow in is our chronic absence rate. And, you know, I know that this number looks not so great. I also do want to point out this was still dealing with some, you know, COVID situations last year where people had to be quarantined, so probably looks worse than it typically is. However, we still have kids who are chronically absent, which means, whoops, that they are missing ten percent or more of the school year, which is about seventeen days. Everything goes by hours, so it's about seventeen days that they're out. That's excused and unexcused absences. So we definitely want to work on that because if you're not in class, you cannot learn what you need to be learning. So how, what is our plan to do that? We have put into place a grade attendance raise, which is our incentive program. We put up the data weekly so that kids in their homerooms can tell where they fall, and then we have monthly and quarterly incentives for the kids, which they always like, of course. We have, we are using our home liaison, we are running her regid. She has been very involved. She is visiting homes, she's doing attendance contracts, she's connecting parents with outside resources. Again, just like academics, it's not always the academics, it's not necessarily always that a child just doesn't want to come to school. There are sometimes some really crazy, awful, underlying reasons that they are not coming to school. So she has done a great job connecting our families with outside resources so that we can find the function of the behavior and try to address the root cause of why they're not coming to school. So moving on to our second side, which is our resilient learner, we are looking at our first strength. So as Jill explained, we are all looking at doing our TFI, which is the, our finality inventory through the EFC, and they are basically looking at our PBIS program. So we met eighty-six percent of our indicators for Tier Two in the first year of implementation, which I think is fantastic because anything in the first year, as you know, it's pretty hard to, you know, get that bar raised so high. So very proud of the staff that helped to allow us to meet eighty-six percent of the indicators. We did receive that silver award. And again, Tier Two is basically looking at a smaller group of our students. Tier One is expectations and supports for everyone. Tier Two is looking at some of the other kids who just need a little bit more support, more focused areas. So that's what we were working on last year. So how did we end up getting the eighty-six percent? We created a check-in, check-out program, and I'm going to give a hundred percent of this credit to the PBI, or the Resilient Learner Group and Kim Kohut, who is, was the assistant principal last year, because that group and, and Ms. Kohut, they spent a ridiculous amount of time going through all the data that this, was involved in this check-in, check-out program. Same things with Greenbrier, kids are paired with an adult, and they check in in the morning, they check out in the afternoon, and they talk about some of their goals and, you know, whether or not they met those. We had a third of our students who entered that program graduated, which is fantastic. How you graduate is you have to meet ninety to ninety-five percent of your points for four consecutive weeks. I, I know data shows that, yep, this was, this was good, we did a good job, but to me, I knew we really did a good job when I had kids coming up and asking, even though they graduated, to stay in the program because they felt like it was helping them become more accountable. So that, to me, was very telling. Our second resilient learner strength is our focus. I believe that the strength is that we are putting a huge focus this year on positive behaviors. So although I talked about how we are working on Tier Two, we want to make sure, and we started off at the beginning of this year, really hitting hard our Tier One and making sure that that framework is strong, because we want to move our Tier Two forward, but in order to do that, we really feel like that, that foundation has to be super strong before we can start putting tiers or legs on a table, as you have the little picture up there. So, so far, here is the data that supports this. We have Tiger waistlets, which are basically like caught being good, you know, are you, are you exhibiting characteristics of the Tiger, Tiger Way? Are you doing what you should be doing? Are you going above and beyond? So we give out these Tiger waistlets, and kids use them basically as money, and they're able to buy things from our Tiger Way store. So in 2021, at this point in time, we have given out sixty-three, fifty-six, and fifty-three Tiger Way tickets for fifth, sixth, and seventh grade. This year, four hundred and four, two hundred and seventy-nine, and a hundred and thirty-one. Why? Because we're really seeing some positive behaviors from our kids, so we are really focusing on making sure they understand that we know this, the things they're doing. The action steps, how did we get there? How did we decide this was our focus? Our, beginning of the year, we did our PD days, we reviewed Tier One, and we really discussed the importance of that foundation. We created a behavior flow chart. We had behavior assemblies for all of our grade levels and really, really honed in on our expectations, and we have the support of our PTA, who gives us And we have the support of our PTA, who gives us great amounts of money to be able to have rewards for our kids. So without them, we could not do this. So again, just like academics, Resilient Learner, what are our concerns? Our concern is our unstructured time. If any of you have ever worked in a middle school, been in a middle school, have a parent of a middle schooler, you know what unstructured time is like, especially on a bus in middle school. So here is our data from bus referrals for the two years, 18, 19, and 2021. 114 bus referrals, 155 bus referrals. That's a lot of referrals. So we are looking at that and how we can support those poor bus drivers. So we are doing that with Bus Bucks, Bus of the Month, and better communication with our drivers. We are adding a mentoring intervention program to hopefully deal with some of those behaviors. And we are working on starting restorative circles as an intervention. So finally, highlights of Hillside. I've been in lots of all the high schools and one of the middle schools in the district. And I can honestly tell you, sorry if anyone else is familiar with the other staff, but the best staff I have ever worked with. What makes it stand above anyone else, I believe, is our students and the characteristics of the Tiger Way that they exhibit, tower of integrity, graciousness, excellence, respect, and responsibility. Our kids try to show those characteristics every day. We have intermurals right now, which are involving all three grade levels, which is great because we're now able to have our kids interact between grades. I think that's wonderful, just for the camaraderie that's going on. So that's kind of the student side of it. The staff side of it, we truly have a family at Hillside. We have weekly spirit dress-up days. We have social activities outside of school, team-building activities, crazy things that we do as a staff just to enjoy every day. And I think that really makes a staff the staff that we have. So I appreciate that. Speaking of the wonderful staff that we have, I am going to ask Ms. Jen Wiles, who has had a horrible day, who stumbled down her stairs at home, ended up in the hospital, and she is still here tonight. Come on up, Jen. Jen is our social studies. Jen will not be shaking hands. Social Studies Department head. Her enthusiasm is the most contagious thing you will ever see. Her classroom, like, just burst. Dr. Smilek, you have been in it, you can attest to that. She is, everything she is doing during the school day is, is involving kids. She's singing in her class. She's, she's using hand motions. She is drawing things. They're using visuals. They're doing videos. It is insane. Her class is unbelievable. She had 86% of her students scored proficient or above on the state proficiency test for the OSTs. Unbelievable. That was for science, 86%. Truly, this woman should be on the poster of how to teach. She is amazing. Thank you, Jen. Our next staff member, Mr. Alan Schleicher, come on up. So Mr. Schleicher has taught science and social studies for as long as I've known him, and I've known him for 11 years now. And last year, towards the end of the year, I came up to Mr. Schleicher and I said, "Guess what? You're teaching ELA next year." He was like, "What?" So he jumped into ELA with two feet. He has done a phenomenal job. He had 95% of his students scored proficient or above on the OSTs. That was one student, guys, one, that did not score proficient or above. That is amazing for someone who has just walked into teaching a new subject area. He makes the greatest use of his time in TBTs. He is always willing to help out. And this man is burning the midnight oil. His car is the first one in the parking lot in the morning. It is the last one there at night. I appreciate everything.
But I got to get back to work.
I know. For outstanding classified staff, Mr. Rich Library, come on up. So Rich has been at Hillside longer than I have, and this man truly knows just about every student by name. They absolutely love him. He's always willing to pitch in. It does not matter. You can see this man cleaning up something on the floor. He's washing windows. He is, I didn't say that, sorry. He is helping kids. He is doing intermurals. There is nothing this man will not do. I, I do not know what we would do without you. You know where every kid is. You know where they're supposed to be. You know how everything runs. We could not run this school without you. Thank you so much, Rich. Last but not least, Ms. Loretta Pasak. So Ms. Pasak has worked at Hillside for quite some time, and then she took a job somewhere else and came to her senses and came back to me. And she took the in-school intervention monitor position. That is not an easy position. You are working with kids who often, not always, but often have some behavioral issues. It is not an easy place to be all day, every day. She came back in May and started working. And after the first week, she came into my office and she's like, "I love this job."
I do.
Best person ever. She builds positive relationships with students. The kids love her. She provides a safe and restored environment for students who are struggling with behaviors. You are in the place you should be. We are so happy you came back to us and we appreciate everything you do for our program.
I can't put my arm behind Jalen.
And the only one that came in Tiger apparel.
Yes.
Noticed.
Okay, do we have any questions or comments from Mrs. Cook?
Well, real quick, as I could make my way back to my seat. Some people know my background of 10 years in middle school and then going to the high school to teach. But I tell you, in my experience, middle school teachers are a special, special breed. It takes, thanks, Jill. It takes, it takes a special person. I am so proud, so, so proud that we have these kind of people in place and that we can celebrate them. And I'm sure it was a difficult decision, I'm thinking only four per building of a middle school to honor today. But kudos to you and the work you're doing and, you know, everything you stated up there. I love the fact that you're right behind your staff. That's how it should be. So excellent, excellent work and excellent presentation. Thank you.
And I, I love the check-in, check-out. But my favorite thing, that was my favorite thing until you got to the intermurals that use, the interimurals that use all three grades. I absolutely love that. I am a huge proponent for getting kids involved in ways outside of your typical learning atmosphere. And I think that those friendships and that social collateral they build in those kind of ways lets them shine in, sorry, lets them shine in ways they can't in other, you know, settings. So that is amazing and I love that. And I would love if you have time to send a schedule of any kind of those events because I would love to pop in and see what that looks like. And congratulations.
Thank you to Hillside staff. I couldn't do without you guys.
There's still two.
Two more board members.
Two more. There's two more.
First of all, just a question. When students ask to stay in the Resilient Learning Program, are they allowed to?
Oh, of course.
Okay. Just wondering, I was hoping that they were. Now, I'm going to try not to be biased, but as a former Hillside Tiger and the parent of four former Hillside Tigers, I, there's always been something pretty special about their place. I don't know what's in the water over there, but Hillside is a very special place and has always been a wonderful place to not only educate children, but care for children and support them. So congratulations. I want to come back and do social studies with Jen Wiles. I think that sounds wonderful and lots of fun. And congratulations to all of the recognized folks tonight. I know there's many more in each of your buildings that you'd love to have here as well, but hooray for everything great that you're doing there and keep up the good work.
Thank you. I can attest, Greenbrier's got some sparkling magic water, too.
Yeah, congratulations to everybody that won. That's pretty cool. And I'm well aware of everything you do there, as my youngest has been there for, sure. She's not there anymore, so I apologize. She might have slipped through a button or something. But yeah, I'm well aware of the job you guys do. It's a good job. Appreciate it.
I'm going to make some friends with our middle school staff right now. I do think it's actually a socially appropriate time for our middle school friends to leave. Thank you very much for coming. Thank you, family members, for being here to celebrate. We really appreciate everybody's work. And while Mrs. McKim gets ready, we are more than welcome to the.
Sorry, I wanted to be the two principals, because I wanted to say what I was going to do when all three were done, was I just appreciated, and you guys didn't just highlight all the good things you're doing, but you also looked at some of the things that, that you aren't, it's, it's hard to be honest about shortcomings. And I really appreciate that you guys were able to do that, you know, in front of everybody. That's cool.
Thank you.
Okay, our third presentation is from Mrs. McKim, who just completed her first year at John Muir. We're very proud of the work that she's done there. Mr. Alaska, can you close that? Do you mind? We do have to open it again when they're kind of gone because it is an open meeting, but we're excited to hear from Mrs. McKim and all of the great happenings at John Muir. Emily?
So thank you guys for coming. I just wanted to, I wanted to start off with a picture that I feel represents our John, our John Muir community more than anything else. And I'll, I'll speak to it as one of our strengths about the school. We, at the end of last year, we asked all of the grade levels to wear different colored shirts for field day, which they've done in the past, so it wasn't a big deal. And then Ms. Kay and I said, "You know what would be an awesome idea? Is if we got every single student outside at the same time and lined them up like a rainbow." Because our motto at John Muir is "We're better together." So as one grade, we're a color, but as an entire school, we make a beautiful rainbow. So we just wanted, this year, we're going to work on making it darker than the rainbow. We got them lined up, but they didn't quite get the, like, actually former rainbow. So I wanted to share that picture because it's something that, the kids loved it. It seemed like a lot of work to get 350 kids outside at the same time, on the lawn, in lines, but they did a great job. All right, our first achievement, and there were a couple, but I really was proud of this one and wanted to highlight it. We have four stars on our state report card in gap closing. And that really is how well we are meeting the performance expectations and closing the educational gaps year after year. So our action step that we used as a school to get there is our BLT, used our instructional playbook. We studied that thing inside and out. They use it. We do walkthroughs that look for those instructional tools. And in conjunction with the board adopted curriculum, so two things we focused heavily on last year were board adopted curriculum. We also focused on implementing professional learning activities and agendas, but really focused on authentic literacy, which we'll talk about in just a second. So my slide, just like the other two, is like we, we didn't even work together, but we all had the same, same idea. One thing that I am 100% absolutely proud of is the math achievement. I actually sat down with my fourth grade math teacher today and she got her value-added data. And she came up to me so excited, "Did you see it? Did you see it?" I said, "I didn't get it." I didn't, so we looked at it. She had 3.99 as her score for value-added. And when you look at all of her math achievement, and not just hers, but our third and fourth grade math overall, we met every single goal except for one, and that was for the white, non-Hispanic students. But for math, we met every other goal for the subgroups. For ELA, it's an area that we're working on. It's a work in progress, but I'm still very proud of that area as well because we met the multiracial subgroup, we met the Hispanic subgroup, the economically disadvantaged subgroup, I think there's one with the black, non-Hispanic subgroup. So those are groups of students that we are really closing the gaps and making gains with. So that's something we're very proud of. Our next achievement strength, last year, our third grade students on our ELA OST. Now, I look at these scores, I looked at Hillside, and they're just like way higher than Ohio and Parma, but I'm still proud of John Muir. Ohio scores 58% for third grade ELA. Parma scored 53% overall, and John Muir scored 59% overall. Of course, we want that score to be higher, but we're very proud that we at least met and exceeded the benchmark for both Parma and the state of Ohio.
As you should be.
And the action step, this again goes to that authentic literacy. Our BLT, when we meet together monthly, we talk about reading, we talk about writing, we talk about discussing. We really hit home the importance of focusing on the curriculum, focusing on those early literacy skills, focusing on our Pi time, our interventions, and we'll talk about that in just a few moments. But this was something that we really celebrated last year, or this summer, at the end of last year. A concern, and this is one that is a huge concern, but we have an amazing plan in place that we're going to work on. So for early literacy, which we all know is the most important thing for our youngest learners, our kindergartners, their fourth graders, so we received two stars on our early literacy component of the report card. But we do have, we've already had BLT discussions. We met today with TBTs. Some of the things that we're doing, which I didn't put on there, but one of the things we did today is we have what's called child talks. So once a month, our school psychologists and every single teacher, whether it's a title teacher, an intervention specialist, a classroom teacher, every single academic teacher that works with the students, we all meet together, we look at the students' scores, we talk about the progress they've made, we talk about whether or not they need to go through what we call PST, as a problem-solving team. So today was our first child talk of the school year. But even in our child talks, we talked about a lot of different things that we can focus on to help that early literacy. So one of the main things that we're doing, and I think, you know, it wasn't just our decision, it was a district-wide decision, but my teachers have wholeheartedly jumped in and agreed to, we are wrapping around students during Pi. That's their prevention for kids that are where they need to be, the intervention for kids that we need to bring up, and then the enrichment for the kids that are advanced. So what that means is our teachers, instead of, if I was a teacher or Dr. Smilek was a teacher, instead of me just having my class, we're taking, I'm taking a group of kids from both of our classes based on the skills they need to work on. And then Dr. Smilek would get another group, our title teachers would get another group, our intervention specialists. So we're taking the kids and we're mixing them together, which is something we couldn't do with COVID. So it's something we're very proud and very excited to get back to. And one of the ways I kind of said it to the teacher, because one of the teachers said to me, "You know, it's really hard taking away five minutes. It takes a couple of extra minutes to get the kindergartners to different classrooms." And he said, "But think about it this way, in one of our grades, we have four teachers." And he said, but think about it this way, in one of our grades, we have four teachers, intervention specialists and titles, so we have like eight different groups that kids can go to. If you kept all of your kids in your classroom, could you teach eight different levels? Could you meet the needs of eight different groups of kids? And that teacher right there, she's like, I didn't think about it that way, you said. So the couple of minutes that maybe it takes us to transition the kids is really more valuable, the time that we're able to meet those needs specifically, those groups of kids. So that's something we're really working hard on this year. And that kind of goes to our next point, which is the collective efficacy. This is something that we've really talked about, and in order for everyone to understand the why behind the wrapping around kids in Pi, they need to understand that every single student who walks through our door, we impact, we have, we play a part in every single child's education, in every single child's life, we do impact all students. So they're not just Mrs. McKim's students, they're not just Dr. Smyleks, they're not just Mrs. Brats, they're all of our kids. What I did for them in kindergarten helped them to be successful in first and second and third and fourth. And so when we get to those OST scores, a lot of times it's like, okay, we'll learn in third or fourth grade, it's those teachers' scores. It's not, it's all of our scores, because we all played a part in how they got to where they are in their education. So we're really focusing on that. Professional growth plans, both for myself and my dean, Kira, and then our teachers, I've asked them to really focus on Pi, encourage them, didn't require, but said, you know, that's something as a school building, we are going to work on, so I'd really like you to consider that as your goal. Opportunity to observe and provide teachers with feedback, that's something that both Ms. Kay and I do. And then we have lots of professional development related to early literacy skills. Today, they're in TBT. I already talked to a couple of my teachers about presenting at our next PD on early literacy. They've been going to a letters training course, and they were really excited to have that opportunity. All right, resilient learner strengths, and I can't say that this is one person. This really is a collective effort of multiple years of administrators working hard to get to this point. So from Dr. Schneider to Rochelle Porter to Chrissy Kruszcheck who's sitting here. We, as a John Muir school, received a gold status for PBIS, which is the highest that you can receive. We're very proud of that. It is our second year, so last year, under Dr. Schneider and Chrissy Kruszcheck, they received that for the first time. Our tier one, which are the common expectations, it's for 100% of the students, everyone is in tier one. We have our Viking treasure tickets, we have lesson plans, we have our respectful, responsible, ready-to-learn, we have weekly and monthly incentives. We scored 100%, so we met every single indicator. That's something we're very proud of, something that, moving forward, we expect to continue. We don't want to drop below 100%, because we know what we need to do to get there. So we're going to continue on that path. The next one was tier two, which is 10 to 25% of our students, so as they talked about in the other presentations, these are the kids that get referrals, that are out of class, kids that are having things going on that are really taking away from them being present in the educational environment. We had 92% implementation, which again, that's an awesome score, but it's 12% that we can go. And then tier three, which gets you the gold status, tier three is 5 to 10% of your students' access, and we had 82% implementation. So we're very proud of that. Our action steps, we implemented tier one, two, and three with fidelity, help on team meetings, and then made adjustments to the PBIS plan. As I said, you know, the principals before me had laid a great foundation. The teachers were amazing when I came in, they knew all of the PBIS. So we came in, we learned what we were doing at John Muir, we made a couple of tweaks, and we've been doing an awesome job since. So that's something we're very, very proud of. All right, another strength is our tier two interventions. So at this point in the year, we have 30 office referrals, which for elementary, it sounds like a lot, but it's really, that's a really low number. Out of those 30 referrals, there's only 13 students out of 355 that have received a referral. So that means some of those kids are receiving two, three, four, or five referrals. It's not like we have a huge group of kids, only 3.7% of our students have received a referral so far this school year, which is way lower than the 10% in tier three. Students who are identified for tier two interventions, we have currently 11.3%, but it's something that is an ongoing process throughout the year. We'd like to get that number a little bit higher, but because we're pretty new into the year, teachers are still referring kids into those processes as the year goes on. So our resilient learner and friendship groups, those are run by our home liaison. Right now, we have 15 students. We're starting off with two groups, and she's doing those twice, so we, those are kids that were referred, you know, based on teacher recommendations, referrals from the group, parent recommendations for kids that have had so many referrals for behavior concerns. And then the last one, oh, I'm sorry, check-in, check-out right now, last year, we had a lot more students on this, but most of our students graduated, and this is Hillside and Greenbrier, and Shiloh, and not Greenbrier, well, one of them did, two of them did. We had a lot more kids that were in the check-in, check-out process, but that fourth grade crew of kids have moved on to other schools. So we were left with seven, and we have teachers right now referring kids to that process. It's exactly the same as they said in middle school. You hook up with an adult, the adult checks in with you in the morning, you set a goal for the day, they check in with you at the end of the day, see if you met that goal. And then the last one we have is the biking connection. We approximately have about 20 students right now. Teachers volunteer to be a part of that, and this is for those kids that are on the bubble. These are those kids that might not have gotten enough referrals, their behavior might not be to the level yet, but they're those kids that they could easily get there, or they could easily stay on the same path that they're on. So we want to try and intervene before they start to get those behaviors and have those issues that are going to impact them educationally. So the action step again is as a resilient learner team, we use our playbook, we implemented tons of professional development, and we focus on restorative practices. Our resilient learner concern was our tier two. As I stated in the previous slide, we received, it was 92% for tier two, which is a great percent, but there was one huge thing that was standing out when Ms. Kay, the team, and I went through the data. And the thing that we struggled in, we received a one out of two points for data, that data clearly being shared with stakeholders. So we do an awesome job of collecting the data, we do an awesome job of tracking the kids, but how do we communicate it to the parents? How do we communicate it to the staff? How do we show what their progress looks like? So we are currently, our tier two committee is in the process of creating success criteria for each of the tier two interventions, and then data will be shared monthly with all of our stakeholders. Kira has created a PBIS update for parents, so quarterly, we'll send that out, but we'll also, in our newsletter, our regular newsletter that goes out monthly, we'll share with parents and we'll share with teachers, so that everyone's informed of how the students are doing. It's great that we have these programs, but if every person that is involved in that child's life doesn't understand the magnitude of that program and whether or not it works, it's not, I mean, it's helping the kid, but we need to share that with everyone so that we can do better on our tier two and help kids. All right, next thing. Almost done. All right, highlights of John Muir. So the first thing that I'm very proud of, last year was my first year. First year, you're trying to get to know everyone, you're trying to learn the staff, what makes everyone kind of run. One of the things that I've really focused on this year is my collaboration, and my staff's collaboration with the community and PTA. Our goal is to get 100% of our full-time educators on our PTA, to join our PTA. Right now, we have 92%, which is amazing. And that was by no small feat. Kira, I owe it all to Kira, she personally wrote letters and notes to people who we know would volunteer and be on it or pay for it, join the PTA, who just might have forgotten, who, so there was no pressure, and we told them that, but I think asking them and really having those conversations with people, you get a lot more buy-in from people if you personally go to them and you make them feel that you want them a part of something. So that's something that we've really committed to doing this year, especially with the PTA. We've also asked our staff, and they've all committed, there is not one that said they would not do it. Again, it's not a requirement, but we've asked them to commit to attend at least one PTA event. And they have been amazing so far. We have a kindergarten night, and we had several educators that came out and helped with that. And then the last part of the staff and community collaboration is that we're just going to continue to work really hard to make sure that we are providing good education and we are working on the well-being of students. The next highlight is our motto, which at John Muir is "Better Together," and that's why I started off with that rainbow. Definitely elementary, if I went to a high school, I'd probably get thrown off my biking ship, because I talk about us being on a biking ship, we're the Vikings, and we're on a voyage, we're working together on this voyage, we're better together. We are, I tell people all the time, doesn't matter what happens outside of our ship, we are in calm waters. We decide and we determine what our journey and our voyage is going to be like. So I know, at one of my staff meetings, I said, I know there's stuff going on with consolidation, you don't know what's going on. I said, but those are factors that you can't control. We know that our kids come from tough home lives. We know that little Joey's never going to do his homework. You can't control that. What you can control is what happens right here on our biking ship. And I've used that a million times, and they're probably like, this is crazy, but it's good. So I continue to remind them that collectively, we are here as a team, and whatever's going on outside of our building does not matter. What matters is the education that we're providing for our kids, the fact that we're showing up, the fact that we are doing everything that we can to support them. And with that in mind, Dr. Smylek really inspired Kira and I, the summer, we came up with a "Better Together" award, because we wanted to recognize staff that really show up every day, who care for our kids, and who really put the time in. So every month, we choose two staff members that are teachers and two staff members that are classified. We take their pictures, they get a biking hat on, and they get to go on the biking ship picture that's up there. We had that mural, which we're having a dedication ceremony another week. We've had that mural painted from a Normandy graduate who graduated many years ago, but she donated her time, all the paint, and her talents to create that mural for us, so that we can put our staff and our students on that. So our students, every month, we do Victorious Vikings for them. Staff is better together, students are Victorious Vikings, their faces will go on the mural as well. And then the last highlight of John Muir is student leaders. We really want to encourage the kids, whether you're in kindergarten, third or fourth grade, to be a leader and show people the right way to do things. So we have our Girls on the Run program, which I got an opportunity to sit in on the other day, the stuff the girls were learning about, what they were doing was amazing. We have safety patrol, student council, and then our Embrace All Committee this year has really taken a step forward, and they're working on being a bridge and connecting students within the building. So we're going to continue to work on those things. My certified staff, Renata Jenkins. Do you want to come up? Renata is amazing, and I've said this, and I've said this about all of the staff, and I truly do mean it. The staff at John Muir before I came there has nothing to do with me, has nothing to do with anything other than they are amazing. But Renata has also, she has shined this year. As our EL teacher, she has jumped in and helped out. You know, John Muir, we are the Ukrainian village, we've gotten a lot of new families from Ukraine, she's provided them support. I've come to her, we have kids that we don't know what's going on, Renata is there, she is running to help us. Renata will help us with phone calls to parents. She has been an asset in our building, so we are very, very happy that she's there five days a week this year. She has also done a lot, not only for the kids, but for the families. The families are able to talk to her, because she speaks different languages, and one of them is Ukrainian. So she's able to communicate with those families that are coming here, that don't know anyone, don't know what it's like in the United States in education, and she's done a great job really supporting them and ensuring that they do, excuse me, that they feel welcome. And then the last thing I wanted to say about Renata, aside from the fact that she's amazing, she had 300% rate of improvement last year with her EL students. Nine of her students graduated, tested out of EL, which is phenomenal. So thank you, Renata, we appreciate you. All right, the next one is Brenda Presenkowski. Brenda is an intervention specialist, and Brenda, when I came to John Muir, Brenda worked with fourth graders, and this year, I asked her to split her time between fourth grade and kindergarten, which, if you know, they are nothing alike. But of all the people, Brenda was up for the job. When I sat and looked at all the intervention specialists, she was the perfect person for this position, and she did it without hesitation. She said, "Do you want me to teach kindergartners? All right, I'm going to do it." So we appreciate it. She is an amazing advocate for all students. I have to say that she is someone who, if you're doing something and she feels like we need to do more for a kid, or they need a different support, she doesn't sit there quietly. She will speak up, and she will make sure that we, as a team, come together and figure out and find a solution. She is an advocate for all students, she is our head coach for Girls on the Run, which I guess this year in action, she did an amazing job, and Ms. Kay said it best the other day. I never would have known that she had this in her, because you see her in a different light in the classroom. Seeing her outside of the classroom with the kids was just phenomenal. She is also a member of our BLT, so thank you, we appreciate you. This is also her last year in education. She's recovering. She's going out with the bag. And then we have our outstanding classified staff, Mr. Dave Brow. So I thought I was going to be the only one with the custodian, and then I saw Greenbrier was our custodian, too. But I do have to say, Dave has been an amazing addition to John Muir. Dave came from Renwood, was at the first couple of weeks of school, and Dave walked into some things that he wasn't used to, coming from Renwood, but he worked extremely hard. He did everything that the teachers needed him to do. I cannot even tell you how many teachers have said to me, "We are so lucky we have Dave, please don't let him leave here, please don't let him leave here, he's amazing." So the students, the staff love him, we are very proud of all the work he does, and one of the things that I really appreciate about Dave, and mostly, you know, because this is something that I feel too, he takes great pride in the building. He's not just there to do a job, he's there to make sure that it's done thoroughly. He ensures safety of all students, and he ensures that the building is a clean, safe, welcoming, learning environment for our students, and I appreciate that. So thank you, Dave. And then last but not least, our shining star, Susan Heedy. Susan is a classroom assistant. Susan, last year, worked with kindergarten, this year, she's working with kindergarten in fourth grade. I have to say, out of all of the people in the building, Susan has been one of the most flexible. I don't assign her things to do, she does them, because she knows that someone needs to do them. So in the morning, you will see her greeting all of the kids in the hallway, she tells them where to go, she helps them if they need to get there, she's standing by the door, waving. Again, that's times she could be doing something else, but she knows in our building, that's something that we need and our kids need that, so she volunteers her time. After school, same thing, she's walking all those kindergartners out, making sure they get to their parents, so we appreciate that. We also, the Friday before school started, so school started out on Monday, so Friday afternoon, we found out we were getting a kindergarten classroom, and that kindergarten teacher was going on maternity leave. So we were starting school on Monday, even though kindergarten wasn't coming Monday, we were going to have a substitute teacher, and Susan stepped in and did an amazing job helping our long-term sub, who just finished her student teaching, who was familiar with John Muir, because she did her student teaching there, but was not familiar with kindergarten, and Susan really helped her and continues to help her. Susan came to our child talk meeting today and was a huge advocate for students, and we appreciate that. we appreciate that. As I said, she volunteers her time during the rival dismissal and more than anything, she does it with a smile. She's a very friendly face. She's someone who does it because she genuinely wants to, not for the recognition and not because she has to. So we appreciate that. Thank you, Susan.
McKim? I have comments.
I'm sure, I was going to say, I'm sure.
Always have comments. So it is, you were given your spiel about the different things. One phrase came to my mind, that it takes a village to raise a child. I mean, you certainly seem to grasp that and utilize that with your staff. So that's fabulous and they have joined in on that. So that's one thing. I also would have loved to have that picture of the Viking ship when I did my spiel about the boat. Would that have been perfect? That would have been perfect. So maybe I'll borrow it.
You could borrow it anytime you want. Very proud of that Viking ship.
Yes. Excellent. Do you know the artist? What's her name?
Kim Palerick.
Oh, Kim Palerick.
Yeah. She's done other murals in Parma, she did Hillside and Denzler.
Yeah. Very good.
She's awesome, very talented.
So going back to the business part, you've done a phenomenal job with various things, like ELA, EL, I got, but EL, that's phenomenal, those numbers, 300%. Didn't be on your own. That's fabulous. Congratulations, kudos to you. So yeah, fantastic, fantastic job and you're proud of your staff and it shows. And I'll tell you what, they obviously follow the leaders, but if you haven't stopped, they will work hard for you together. So very good. Thank you. I do want to, one more thing. One more thing. I stopped up to try to greet everybody coming in and I think I caught everybody. I watched you interact with a grandfather who brought a bookbag. He tried to hand me the bookbag and I looked at him like, I don't know what to do with this. As I could carry it, I don't think it looks good. So, but anyway, you know, you came out and you handled that and you had a little discussion and I recalled the discussion, but I'll let this go, but how you handle that tells me how you handle quality things with your staff. And it was excellent. So probably you'll like it. No, I'm good.
So my first interaction, and I'm going to out myself a little bit here, at John Muir was when I first was hired or elected to the board and I went in to tour the school and I met Dr. Schneider. And I think it was the first time him and I had ever had like a face-to-face conversation. And I was like, this is like a whole nother world here. Like it was different from the other environments because most of my interactions had been in my kids' groups. And I was like, wow, like this is a special place. And then I've kind of watched grow and I've seen some of our excellent folks end up there. And by the way, if you can write PTA invites to board members, they also send checks in. And they attend mural dedications if they get Google invites. Yes, especially if you want. But so I've always kind of had this special place for John Muir. And then once the board resolution came for you, I was so excited because I had the pleasure of having you be an administrator for my kids. And so to me, like tonight was the culmination of, I'm going to call it the evolution of Emily, like seeing you be into this incredible instructional leader and having the staff like by your side and throwing the ship in the same direction. And I know you said earlier, those numbers aren't as high as Hillside, but it's happening on your ship and that's all that matters and it's incredible. So I am incredibly proud of you and your team and your students and your teachers and everybody. And I am just so grateful that when you decided to move up on the ladder, you stayed in harmony.
Well, clearly, lots of good stuff to have to give John Muir. Congratulations to all of you because you're all a part of it, that's for sure. PBIS Gold Status is not something easily achieved. It takes a lot of hard work and a big team putting a lot of effort into that. So congratulations on that and best wishes for continuing. I know you will because you know how to get there, just like I said. I appreciate the shout out for PTA. I have a little history there and you know, the T in PTA is teacher. So it's great to have all your teachers as members of PTA. And I am a believer in when parents are involved in interacting with teachers on behalf of their students, the kids do better. So I'm happy to see that that's something that you're working hard towards. And just love that Viking ship, that Viking voyage, the whole thing. It's a really great theme to, I bet you the kids are enjoying that. That's a funny thing.
They love the Viking ship.
For them. And thank you for your service to the Ukrainian community in particular, but all children that need that extra support. I can't imagine how that is coming from someplace else to a foreign setting and trying to figure life out, you know, what we'll learn and that's got to be something really, really special and really remarkable to be a part of. And so congratulations on your efforts there too, because I can't imagine doing that myself. I just don't even know how, you know, how those folks are getting along. They're getting along with help from people like you. So thank you for all of that. And you asked my question about who was the muralist. So got it.
I just want to say, congratulations, everybody that won. You're new this year and you're the principal and I don't envy you for taking over the problems, but it looks like you have a good handle on it. So looking forward to seeing, you know, what comes of it, come up with that. And for the English, I know my kids didn't come from a foreign language, but I wonder if I can hire you because I have no idea what they're saying. It's so hard sometimes. Like translate or teach them to speak English better.
BFR, be for real.
It's so annoying. But thank you. Enjoyed it.
I had just had one other thing.
No, you're cut off. Oh, you can ask.
It's pretty close. I just, one more thing that I loved about the presentation is what we do impacts everyone, you know? Everything we do impacts all students. I think that's a, that's an important mindset to have. And so, for me, thank you for your tolerance. Tolerance was important, you know?
It is a good life skill.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to use my.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. Now is more than appropriate time.
David Brown, good to see you.
And this is a pretty lucky family as well. Thank you for supporting the foundation, Dave, to the town. Your husband walked out with a boatload of stuff.
He loves supporting things and winning prizes.
As we transition into Mrs. Strzok, I just want to thank the board. I mean, I know that certainly these are relatively lengthy nights, but I think what's really important is that, you know, we get this report card and it's this huge compilation of statistics and sometimes sort of hard to make sense of, especially from a district level. And I think what's really important for you, but also more importantly for our public to see is all of the work and really expertise. I mean, there's a lot there when they're describing their action steps that people really would have no grasp of if we didn't do these presentations. So certainly we have growth to make, there's no question about that, but the professional effort and the teams that we have in place and the processes that we have in place, I promise you I would put against any school district in northeast Ohio. I truly believe that. I know the results leave, you know, some room for growth and we're working at that. But I'm really proud of the teams that presented tonight and I'm proud of really the presentations you'll see throughout. Along those same lines, very proud of Mrs. Strzok and all of the work that she did and I will reserve further comments for her at the end, but really happy to turn the presentation over to her. She's going to share the goals that she has this year as well as strengths from her performance last year. Mrs. Strzok.
Good evening. Sorry, number four, right?
Yes, number four.
So this is just a picture of our, the team that we took to go this summer. Our goal this year is really to empower our teacher leaders even further in terms of getting teachers into the classrooms and doing learning walks and then having some specific protocols for our curriculum liaisons at the elementary level and then also our department chairs. And then my favorite is the Girls on the Run from Ridge Brook. Best experience of my life. I got to co-coach along with Leah Walden last year. So I always like to put pictures of children because this is why I do what I do. And I'm going to be vulnerable. The last four weeks have been tough for me professionally. And I know that our report card is one data point, but it certainly does not represent what we are doing in Parma with our 15 buildings and the programming that we offer. I'm going to highlight some areas of strength, but I'm also going to be pretty specific about our action steps and what we are doing differently this year. Our playbook, you know what it is, but I want to share with you the four hearts. We are really focusing on guided practice, which is step number four in how we teach and it is everything on the right-hand side of the playbook. It is kids talking to kids, kids engaged with the teacher, kids engaged with text before they get to that independent practice. We are modeling this in everything that we do, all the way from DLT to our teacher-based teams. So I wanted to share that as an area of focus in our playbook. I also oversee partly the Resilient Learner alongside Dr. Smilak. I want to celebrate that on Monday, October 10th, we will be with the CAVs with 15 area school districts. So last year we had the Mental Health Summit in Parma and 15 districts in this area said we want to do what Parma's doing. Kevin Love has partnered with our Hope Squad and he is donating $5,000. Our kids are going to be going through various trainings. If you don't remember what Hope Squad is, it is the ears and the eyes of our school buildings for school safety, suicide prevention and bullying and harassment. And I'm very proud of that. It was recently on Channel Five and Marion Armstrong is our counselor that oversees that. Major functions, I oversee everything from first step all the way on up to career intact. So when our kids are walking through the doors for the first time and when they're leaving us for the final time. And I'm really proud of that. Often you see me up here presenting curriculum adoptions. That is one slice of my pie. I do a lot with funding. I meet alongside with Sean Nucio quite a bit. I have quite the healthy budget to really give our kids the opportunities that we need to give them. And because it's healthy, it's not coming from general fund, but it is our ESTER and our federal dollars, which I'll explain later. I do all of the professional development and oversee that with a very strong team on both sides of the playbook. I work alongside with Dr. Smilak, our district leadership team. I work with our principals for instructional leadership. I am the liaison for our school counselors at the middle and the high school level and I work with our department chairs, our cluster chairs and alongside our curriculum liaisons. This is my team. It's the same as last year except for Robert Huhn is gone and Megan McCaskey is in his place. I'm going to share with you a celebration and I'm calling this a celebration and this is not what our early literacy score showed on our report card. I want you to understand that since I was up here presenting the report card, our early literacy score measures fall to fall. So it measures if I'm a kindergarten student in fall of 2021, that same student, fall of 2022, if I'm not on track, it's that first test that they take when they walk in the doors, then we get a deduction. And so in my mind, that's not an accurate measurement, I'm going to be completely honest with you, but this is. And this is our kindergarten students last year. And our kindergarten students last year, from fall to winter, went up 28.6%. From winter to spring, went up 17% and overall, 45.6%. Our report card does not measure throughout the year and measures from fall to fall. And so I wanted you to see this because we are getting a lot of feedback and comments about our school performance and this is reflective of what our kids are doing within a year and I'm really proud of that. And it breaks it down by low risk, moderate risk to high risk. And yes, there are improvements, but we are working hard on our early literacy skills at our youngest learners with phonemic awareness, phonics, vocabulary, reading fluency before they can get to the comprehension. And we're tightening up the screws. I have been in three elementary buildings this week, walking through classrooms alongside with the principal to see how our prevention, intervention and enrichment is working, our core instruction, and we're constantly providing feedback and working together to provide our teachers resources and support. So I wanted to share this and I wanted you to see what it looks like within one year. Our progress, we received four stars, but I broke it down and these are the highlights of some of our celebrations. Anything in the middle of the green is significant. So if you look closely at this, for our Ohio State test for English Language Arts in grades four, five, six and eight, we were beyond a year's worth of growth. In fact, in fourth grade, we are hitting the blue area, which is very, very significant. So our kids came in low, but we're getting them to where they need to be. Our mathematics, same thing. I want to highlight grade four, five and seven, we are in the blue. We're at the highest level of growth. Although they came in low, we're making that progress. We absolutely have work to do in sixth grade, or I'm sorry, in eighth grade, but we also adopt a new curriculum to support that. The other piece I'm very excited about is our special education rating. So I oversee Office of Exceptional Students. This is a big deal. So right now we stand at four points and four points for all of these areas is the highest you can get. So we met the requirements. There is more data that will be coming out in December, but right now, in terms of disproportionality of sped identification, what that means is in terms of our minority students, our impoverished students, we are identifying special ed kids at the right proportion. So we're not over identifying our subgroups. So we got four out of four in that area. We have timely initial evaluations to identify our kids. We got four out of four. We have amazing early childhood transition and secondary transition, four out of four. Timely correction of non-compliance. So if there's anything that is sent up to the state, we correct it right away. So we have no errors. Our data collection is accurate, four out of four. And in terms of auditing, they picked several IEPs to see if we're writing it the correct way. We got four out of four. So I'm really proud of this data as well. Increase in student achievement, I just wanted to highlight on the left-hand side in every single course, we have board adopted curriculum, thanks to you. We have curriculum maps and we have quarterly assessments. Now that's just a screenshot, but it's like a huge document with links for all of our teachers. Three years ago, we did not have that. So anytime you're adopting your curriculum and anytime you're adjusting curriculum, there's always going to be some gaps. So I anticipate that we will continue to monitor with our curriculum usage reports and our assessments. That's the data piece that I'm bringing to monthly principal meetings. We have breakout sessions and we continue to have common everything. Our teachers know our curriculum, our teachers are teaching the same thing, they still have their creative lens. And now we've added some adaptive pieces at the middle school and high school level to help our students that are at that basic level and need to get to proficient for next school year. We have curriculum for encore and electives. We've extended, gifted to the middle. We have curriculum for encore and electives. We've extended gifted to the middle school. And this summer, we have aligned all of our AP courses through an audit process between College Board, and we have a very, very systematic way in which our syllabuses are collected, which was never the case before. In terms of increasing student achievement, our district goals are aligned with our building goals, that align with our principal goals, that align with our teacher goals. And all of our action steps in every single building, if they are an elementary principal and teacher and support staff, it's achievement and early literacy. If it's middle school, it's achievement. If it is high school, it is achievement and graduation rate. So, we are all speaking the same language. Improving transparency at the district level, I'm most proud of our relationship and healthy relationship that we have with PEA. We sometimes don't always see eye to eye, but boy, can we have those healthy conversations and meet in the middle. And that doesn't happen at every district. And it speaks volumes to both sides and what we really want in this district, which is opportunities for kids. We work together on our Ohio Teacher Evaluation Committee, and so, we have both sides working together. We have common language for what that looks like. In other districts, there's a lot of tension. There's a lot of barriers. That does not occur in our district. At the district level, we, alongside with Dr. Smiley, I do principal check-ins at all levels, and I am overseeing the bond issue student campaign for our upcoming issue. To go a step further with transparency in First Step, we added pods for neighborhood students and future elementary buildings. Right now, we have a waitlist for typical peers. We had an addition of a general education preschool programming at First Step. At elementary, we have eight buildings, but we have a common master schedule with all instructional minutes that are the same. We have skill-based intervention and enrichment at all eight buildings. We have 160 teachers that have gone through letters training, which is the science of reading, which is going to help support that early literacy. And we are already working through our dyslexia screening, which does not start until next school year, and our team will be represented at OSBA this year presenting. At the secondary level, we have created a process for gifted identification. So, all kids receive gifted identification and gifted services. Three years ago, it was just elementary. And we have professional development established at the middle school and the high school level. We've added learning lab for eighth grade to get ahead of that graduation rate instead of being reactive. We also have the addition of adaptive remediation because when we pulled our data for achievement at the high school, so for example, if I'm an English II student and I pulled all the kids that are sitting for English II, our achievement was at 70% or higher for English II. Where it went down were our kids that have to retake for graduation requirements. They have to continue to retake the test so that they can pass it and become proficient. So, what we're doing in our high schools right now is we are pulling all of those kids that are retaking the test in the fall, and they have a license for IXL Learning, which is an adaptive remediation program that they will work through in their core classes and then outside. And we will continue to do that. We also establish PASS, which is the alternative process for graduating our kids at the high school level. It used to just be housed at Parma, but now it's at all three buildings. And we did not add FTEs to that. We did not add teachers. That was not an additional cost. We looked at ways that we could do that within each building. And I love these two pictures because the first one is our kindergarten kickoff that we have. So, that's when our kids are coming in and again, representing our graduation, where our kids end up. And I'm very proud of that and also being a product of the Parma City Schools. In terms of practice fiscal responsibility, I oversee ESAR. It's our last year, thank God. Title of funding. I have Title I, Title II, Title III, which is EL. I have Title IV and then Title 6D. I have permanent improvement for curriculum rotation. And then, I also oversee the general fund for curriculum, EMIS and assessment and exceptional students. So, I have really and truly six budgets, and I sit and I make sure, one, that we are being fiscally responsible, but I also look at how we can save money in the general fund with ways that we can code things effectively in terms of programming and staffing out of federal dollars. So, we're always working together. Our savings, we recently added ACES. We're in our third year. I always like to highlight this. So, since the first year of ACES, this tells you how many kids are no longer at an outside placement. I use Monarch as our tuition piece, and it's typically $88,000, and I'm missing a zero, I'm sorry, $88,000 per student. And so, where we sit right now as of yesterday is $1,848 that we've saved because, one, we added ACES, which was Dr. Smiley's vision. But what I get to do is I get to help with the aberration piece of it, and we're really proud of that as well because kids that are, were typically educated outside of our district are back, and that's where they need to be. I have two goals. The first one is data to drive instruction. I'm telling you, I'm going to work my butt off to get four stars because that's what we need. I would love to have five, but I'm a realist. It's really hard to go from three to five. My action steps for that is our educators are always assessing kids all day long, every single day. And not only are they assessing, they're checking for understanding, they're adjusting instruction, and they're reteaching where they need to be with the curriculum that we have implemented. We have assessment data that is specific and will be used all the time at every single collaborative meeting. Our principals and teachers are held accountable for the use of curriculum. We have usage reports that we run from my office. I sit down with the EMIS department, and any assessment that now goes up to the state, I want to know every little piece of assessment data because I want to make sure that it is correct because that's how we're rated. So, I am doing that as a stakeyard, just to make sure. Not that anything's wrong, but I want to know everything now. Walk-throughs and OTES feedback, again, specific to our district playbook. Dr. Smiley commented on how many times we've been in walkthroughs, but that feedback piece for me is extremely important in terms of how we provide professional development to our teachers and our support staff. Goal number two is all of our teachers will be using board-adopted curriculum. You know, I had a meeting with our department chairs, and I suggested to our high school department chairs that, you know, we really need to get ahead of what failure means. And Tiffany Strachan can say this is what failure means, but I want teachers to tell me what that means in the building, in the content area, and what they're going to do before that F gets on the report card. And we cannot just have the intervention of our kids and our families need a check-home access center, and, you know, they're getting an F. And I'm not saying our teachers are doing that, but the one thing I will say is all of our department chairs sent me their agenda, and every single one of them had a clear plan for how they're going to be proactive with these failures. Because at the end of the day, our graduation rate has everything to do with what happens in the classroom and what it means to fail a class. So, how are we grading kids? Is it compliance or is it standard-based? And so, we're really hitting home with that at the secondary level. We are increasing our professional development offerings with tested courses. Our department chairs, I said, "Listen, I'm giving you a half-day of release time, once a quarter. Tell me what is the best use of your time." We went through a protocol activity. I suggested learning walks, meaning that, you know, oftentimes, they will hear from their department members what they're doing, how they're doing, but do we really know what we're doing, right? And so, at the end of that protocol, all of our secondary department chairs said that they are willing to go into classrooms or have department members come into theirs, which I think is powerful at our secondary level. And then, the last thing is district and building professional development is always going to be connected to early literacy, to our achievement, and to our graduation rate. So, priorities, real simple. I want achievement at four stars. I want gap closing from four to five stars. I want growth from four to five stars. To do this, we will have our data meetings. We will use the data to change instruction. There will be ongoing professional development. We will monitor interventions and enrichments and make sure that they're engaged and purposeful, and we will increase and over-communicate with parents. And so, I'm going to work as hard as I can because I know that we have the best teachers. I know we have the best principals, and I want to see it on our district report card. So, that is my presentation. So, thank you.
Questions and comments, perhaps?
Absolutely. So, so much to digest there, but a lot of things that pop out for me. One, I'm extremely grateful to you that you have taken the necessary action to overcome our deficiencies by studying and adopting a new curriculum, seeing where our curriculum lacks and where we needed to change it. I appreciate that real hardly. The ACES program, the inception of that, and going, I remember going off the menu and looking at the program, I'm coming here and trying to see how we're going to do it. And hearing all the naysayers, 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 I said, "Come, we have built one ECHO program." And we thank that to you and Dr. Smiley. That's, and others. I mean, that's fabulous. That's fabulous. Kudos for that. And I have no doubt, no doubt in my mind, you're going to work hard to get these things to where you want them. And that I also appreciate.
Thank you.
That's it for me.
I have a couple things. The first, and I'm really excited about your, the early literacy 45.6% data point, because I was trying to explain this to somebody yesterday, and I said, "It's like when I make pancakes for dinner. All the kids want the first pancake on the stack because it's actually my last pancake of the batch." And my development of making pancakes across the thing are great, but when I make pancakes again next week, that first one looks like crap again. Same thing. When you take that summer piece and then they go back into a classroom and everything's newly different, then you're like, "Here, assessment, that's great." It's that same concept. And to see that huge strength in that year just speaks volumes. Question, when they use the PASS program, does that impact our graduation rate?
It does. We're always a year behind. So, our four-year cohort is 60% of our graduation score. Our five-year cohort, so it's when our students start in ninth grade and if it takes them five years, so that would be 40% of our score. So, what we're doing right now, I just met with counselors, is we looked at every child that did not graduate last year, and if they're not sitting and pass, we're making personal phone calls to get them to come back.
Okay.
So, yeah, we're identifying that. I forgot to add that in my presentation.
No, I love that. I love that. The last thing, there's two practices. When I, 2016, I decided this was what I was going to do. Every principal that talked to me had the same thing. We have nowhere to go. Like, there's no one above us where we can look to be an instructional leader. So, when Dr. Smiley came in and we kept using this term instructional leader, I was like, "I don't understand." I was never from education. I didn't understand. And I just very respectfully teased him about, you know, what's left for him to do after hearing everything from you. But it is this, like, perfect partnership where Dr. Smiley sees where we need to go and can get us there. And then, he has the, I don't know what the right word is, the, oh, what's the word I'm looking for?
Vision?
Not vision. He knows that the trust in his team, in you, that he can say, "Here", and then he can move on to the next thing that's important for our kids. And I talk to board members all across Ohio, and it is so rare that we have, that they have that, that it exists. And we truly have a healthy organization. And the senior leadership team that we have, I know you said you put the teachers up in the county. I'll take the senior leadership team across the state. Like, I am incredibly grateful for it. And the, like, the way you build off of each other and grow, and ACES is a perfect example. Like, I just, our kids, there is nowhere better for kids in this area to be than the Parma City School District. And I hope that people watch these so they can see them.
You're up.
Well, you know, we had three great presentations tonight by building administrators that gave us a good look into what's happening in their buildings and identifying successes as well as maybe a couple of challenges. And their successes come from the leadership that you've provided, you know? What you do, all the things that you've outlined tonight, you find places to support them so that they can be successful at the level with children, you know, and educating kids. And it's a really big deal. And it's clear where that comes from too because you folks are really dialed in to doing what's necessary to have our kids succeed. And thank you for all of that. Thank you for your many, many efforts in, along that way. And a couple of other just random thoughts. When I saw about the waitlist for the typical peers, I know there were years and years when you couldn't get enough typical peers to participate in the First Step program. And it just is wonderful to see the growth of that program and how many kids are being served now as it's expanded and how that helps when those kids then enter our elementary schools too because they have that foundation. So, I was excited to see that. And the ACES savings, of course, that's, that's great. I mean, I know we have to still pay teachers, still provide certain funding for them here, but it's nothing like if we had to send them someplace else. And to me, I think one of the, one of the richest parts of that too is they're being served in their home community. And they feel part of their home community, and their families feel that. So, I'm real happy about that. As always, everything's impressive and very well thought out, very well presented the action steps to get where you want to go. It's not just identifying what you need to do, it's how you're going to get there. So, that's pretty great. And I'll just say really quickly, and if you don't have enough on your plate already, that you went to coach the Ridgewood Girls with the Run, Girls on the Run is pretty fantastic, and it's, it's just a big example of your why. So, thanks for all you do, everybody.
All right. Well, when the first three presentations were done, I was thinking, "I really wish there was one more," and then you got up some bank. No, I did have a question. When you put your goals, you didn't have the early literacy goal. What is, what is your goal? Is that one?
I did.
Oh, you did. What was that?
Yeah, so.
What was the stars, the goal that we're trying to get to?
Oh, we want to get like four stars for early literacy. But, yeah, if achievement goes higher, then naturally, yeah, literacy and graduation are going to.
Yeah, and I know that, you know, the state report card is just one part of everything, but I mean, it is something that people do look at, like, when they're on Zillow and they're thinking about whether or not they're going to move to the district or they're deciding whether they want to go to public or private or charter school. So, it's really good to see that as soon as we realize that it was, that it's being tackled to make the improvements so that we don't, you know, we don't just act like everything's fine and what we're trying to do. So, I appreciate that.
Here's the catch. By the time we get there, they're going to change it. So, how many times have you been assistant superintendent, have they changed like the metrics on the state report card?
Well, the early literacy, like, I have a love-hate relationship with it because the technical documents did not come out until the end of July. And so, basically, like, if we would have known the fall to fall, we would have changed when and how we're testing kids because we have a 30-day window. So, yeah.
And let's not forget that they actually change the metrics every year.
That's what, so that was, yeah.
Every year, the metrics change. And it's.
And it's all so that there's a bell curve, so that you never stay with one specific target. It's all based upon the results that they get.
But thank you.
I just had a few words too, and I know it's late, but, you know, I don't know how Tiffany manages all of these processes the way she does. I mean, every one of those things, those aren't words on a PowerPoint she lives at every day. And I know I have the office next to her, but I still don't really understand how she is able to conceptualize, really from pre-K to twelve, and really in the past, all that she does. I will say, I've told her personally, and I'm sure I've told you, that we've done a lot here in terms of personnel and structures and who does what. And the best hire, the best decision we ever made collectively was to really appoint Tiffany and be blessed. I don't want to say appoint, I want to say be blessed to have Tiffany as our assistant superintendent. I also want to introduce two of her teammates. I want to make sure we thank Mrs. Zermet, and I want to make sure I pronounce her name correctly because she'll correct me if I don't. Mrs. Krusak, who are both really integral parts of her team. So if we can give all three of them a round of applause. But thank you to those two of her teammates. So luckily, we do have a very short agenda. I don't know if folks want to take a break or anything, or just plow right through that.
Ladies, this is a socially appropriate time for you to leave.
This is the only time we'll do three schools. We had to get them in.
Seriously, I did, I did want to say, when you made that facial expression, you looked a lot like tomorrow.
Oh, thank you.
Every woman loves hearing that, Steve.
Definitely, I know, but it's always it. All right, good catch-up, guys.
All right, let it roll.
All right, but move on. Many thanks to Dr. Smilak for rousing presentations.
Two hours worth of presentation.
Yes.
You're rousing, sir.
Appreciate that. So communications, Mrs. Carpus.
Excuse me. Alls I wanted to say was, I was fortunate enough to watch the final Parma Senior High Valley Forge volleyball game the other night, and Valley Forge was triumphant, and they went through all five sets. But the amazing student support that was there from Parma is something that, you know, I see Valley Forges every week, but Parma had something special going on. They were doing the worm, they were doing contests on the ground, they were doing, I mean, they were, they were energetic and excited, and they were there for their team. And they never stopped supporting their team, even when, like, Valley Forge were going to run in the fifth set, they were there every moment cheering their, like, teammates on, which was really, really cool to see. So that's all I have for our presentations, go ahead.
I do.
I do, actually. But I'm, I bet it's going to repeat you. So I'm going to let you do it.
Well, that's one mind, yes.
I was going to say that, but we had Taste of the Town, I was going to do that one, but I'll let you do it.
On behalf of the foundation, I will thank everyone that supported Taste of the Towns last week. It's our big event each year, which we have not been able to have the last couple of years because of COVID. And so it was very successful, our best attended, sold out early, and most financially successful of all the ones we've ever had.
Really?
Yeah.
That's awesome.
It was great, and the atmosphere was great, just everything about it, I think, was a good event. And so we appreciate the support. Lots of staff were there, lots of retirees too come back and they connect, and it's, it's a fun night. So we had, we had a good time. All the donations, baskets for the raffle from the buildings. Leslie Bell from Shiloh coordinated the district donations. And so that was pretty, pretty wonderful. So the whole event was great, thank you for the support.
My shamelessly texted Mr. Ruda pictures of the food that he was missing. He had stuff going on, so I was like, ha, ha, ha.
So, the, there's a lot of stuff. So is there a list of these, the people that can share the words without?
Oh, yeah.
It's on there, the passport.
Yeah. Did you take your program with the passport?
Yeah, I did, but I'm just saying for people, or, that they could go and, you know, have, you know, support those businesses.
That's a wonderful plot. We could get out an email that would go to everybody so that they know.
Or we just put it on our website so that they don't get it.
Maybe we could just get it to Ms. Popick, and she can share it out on the stuff?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Is that allowable?
That'd be great.
I have information, we'll let it know.
That's great.
Absolutely.
I know you were going to have your own personal dinner plans.
Item that I wanted to talk about. No, I didn't, you just started talking about taste. I want to thank Dr. Schneider for coordinating the tour of Parma High School last Saturday and connecting with Mr. Potasik from North Olmstead Schools, the business manager there, for us to tour that. I wish every voter in the district could have participated in that tour and understood where the need is for new buildings and the gains that can accrue as a result of having new buildings. So we went through Parma, and it wasn't a large group, but the ones that went, I think, really, were really pleased to have the opportunity to do that. And then some of us went over to North Olmstead, which is a four-year-old building. And if you'd have told me that they opened up a month ago, I wouldn't have believed it because it still looked pristine. But to see the learning spaces and the, just the way it's built by today's standards to serve the needs of education, and that's not just teaching kids, which is, of course, our business, but also all the pieces and parts that go into teaching kids. You've got to feed them and get them there, and, you know, all the kinds of things that Mr. Potasik showed us. It was really quite wonderful to see, and I'm sure hopeful that people would take the opportunity to learn about that from us as we continue on this journey to try to help people understand what the need is. But it was great, and I will say, one thing that the business manager started off with when we went there, and he said, out of all the things that we do, that we have done in making, you know, then they had a middle school, high school campus. And out of all the things that they did there, safety was the biggest improvement that he felt in the entire process. So that's something to keep in mind too, it was very well done. And Mr. Ruda, you went, I don't know if there was anything else that you might want to add about it.
Yeah, I wish more people would have come just to see the difference between the two. I think the couple of the kids that came, a lot of their parents, I think we ruined them because the one little girl, she's in art, and when she saw all the artwork and everything that they have there, it was like an excitement slash jealousy. And then the other kid that's in wrestling, we saw a wrestling room, and a weight room, and an Emmy.
Yeah, it's a nice, it's a nice facility.
Yeah, we just ruined those poor kids. So hopefully they're a little happier. But yeah, the safety thing, take a note as you're walking around. It was pretty amazing how they integrated all the new technologies and how they can hydraulically lock doors without using, you know, a lot of electronically. So something we can't do here, we could do in a new one, so it was nice to see that, so, yeah.
I would like to real quick add to that. So we had our safety and security, or all those safety people here for that meeting, and they kept saying, we're leading the way in the non, like, technology side of that under Dr. Schneider. So everyone watching, if we want to get to, like, the actual physical building part of that.
Yeah, merging in with that would be-
Right, we have the team in place that can implement it all, we just need to get it done.
The one little girl that was on this tour that went to North Olmstead was so excited about everything as she's going through the building. She was very excited. And her mom said to her, should we move to North Olmstead?
Oh, what?
Or stay in Parma? And the little girl said, stay in Parma and vote yes. That was her response to her mom, so I'm done, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm sorry. That was a great story.
It was a good story. I liked it too, I enjoyed it.
Anything else?
Thanks, girl, for the event.
Sean? Thank you. Do we have any amendments? God bless. All right, public participations, it's time we open up the public participation.
Mrs. Chauvin, anything?
Anybody?
Good, thank you.
All right, so very good, we'll move along for that. So I move to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-two dash one zero three seven eight. Approval of the written record of proceedings from September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two in special board of education meetings.
Second.
We have a motion and second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-two dash one zero three seven eight. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Saying none, we'll call Mrs. Nusio. Mr. Vaughn? Yes. Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts?
Yes.
Dr. Ruda?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash one zero dash three seven eight has been approved. This brings us to curriculum, Mrs. Brodts.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. We'll be pleased to know that there are no action items tonight, and unless another board member has something to discuss, that includes curriculum.
All right, awesome, thank you so much. Mrs. Brodts. Mrs. Ruda, this is the business.
Yes, I move to adopt resolution two zero two-two dash one zero dash three seven nine. The approval of the Parma City School District bus routes for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-two dash one zero dash three seven nine. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none, Mrs. Nusio? Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn? Yes, resolution two thousand twenty-two dash one zero dash three seven nine has been approved.
Okay, I move to adopt resolution two zero two-two dash one zero dash three eight zero. Resolution to approve utility easement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-two dash one zero dash three eight zero. Any questions or comments from the board?
I could, yeah, I can comment. So when Chick-fil-A was constructing their facility that would be just east of Byers Field there, they had to do some work on sewer pipes, a sewer line. And so what this does is just address going forward how that would be handled. There really wasn't any type of legal agreement in place, and so this allows us to, allows them to move forward. Essentially granting easement to them allows them to address that i- if the need arises in the future. We don't necessarily forecast that need, but it needed to be sort of dot the i's and cross the t's and have something in place in terms of that, Mr. Carpus. Thank you.
Mrs. Nusio? Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn? Yes, resolution two thousand twenty-two dash one zero dash three eight zero has been approved.
Okay, unless anybody has anything else to discuss, this will conclude.
Thank you, you did a very good job. Mrs. Carpus, finance, and please, Mr. Ruda, confusion.
I will.
I move to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-two dash one zero dash three eight one. Approval of supplemental appropriations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-two dash one zero dash three eight one. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none, Mrs. Nusio? Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn? Yes, resolution two thousand twenty-two dash one zero dash three eight one has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-two dash one zero dash three eight two. Acceptance of contributions and donation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-two dash one zero dash three eight two. Any questions or comments from the board? And as always, I would love to thank you, thank you, people for donating or remembering Parma City School District and their generositys. Thank you so much.
I'm sorry, I got ahead of my cell phones.
I, Mary Suterman, and then lastly, the other, oh, wait, sorry.
Mrs. Nusio? Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn? Yes, resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero one dash one zero dash three eight two has been approved.
Unless any other board members have anything to discuss, this concludes finance one evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Carpus, and thanks for standing. This brings us to legislation, Mrs. Carpus.
I don't have anything to discuss tonight, Mrs. Brodts, do you? Move on.
Move on. This brings us to human resources, Mrs. Brodts.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. I move for the adoption of resolution two thousand twenty-two one zero three eight three. Approval of the following certificated exhibits. Confirmation of certificated replacements, confirmation of stipend amounts, confirmation of supplemental appointments, confirmation of supplemental contracts, approval of the certificated non-compensated leaves of absence.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-two dash one zero dash three eight three. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none, Mrs. Nusio? Mrs. Brodts?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn? Yes, resolution two thousand twenty-two dash one zero dash three eight three has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-two one zero three eight four. Acceptance of certificated entitlement. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-two dash one zero dash three eight four. Any questions or comments from the board?
It's just funny that Brenda was here.
Was just here, yes. There's also Linda, I'm sure they're all wonderful, but Linda Davies is on there too, she was phenomenal and.
Yeah, I think many of them. I think that pile is getting smaller and smaller. Mrs. Nusio, please. Mrs. Brodts?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn? Yes, resolution two thousand twenty-two dash one zero dash three eight four has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution two thousand twenty-two one zero three eight five. Approval of the following classified exhibits. Confirmation of classified appointments replacements, confirmation of classified, or the change of classified assignments, confirmation of classified resignation, approval of classified and non-compensated leaves of the absence.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-two dash one zero dash three eight five. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none, Mrs. Nusio? Mrs. Brodts?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn? Yes, resolution two thousand twenty-two dash one zero dash three eight five has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution two thousand twenty-two one zero three eight six. Approval of classified substitute salary schedules.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-two dash one zero dash three eight six. Any questions or comments from the board?
I can comment and describe what I'm wrong with. So it, we just changed this to reflect the increases that we accepted in the last contract, correct? So the percentage has stayed the same?
I'm not sure what the schedule looks like.
Yeah, that's, what I said, what did Carl say?
Oh, yes, yeah.
Ninety percent of X, it's just that X changed a little bit.
Tied to the salary.
So in concept, this didn't change anything, it just had to change because of the new numbers that the OFC-
There are flex economy.
Correct, correct. Thank you, sir. Mrs. Nusio? Mrs. Brodts?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn? Yes, resolution two thousand twenty-two dash one zero dash three eight six has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution two thousand twenty-two one zero three eight seven. Approval of revised job description for Title III measures.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-two dash one zero dash three eight seven. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none, Mrs. Nusio? Mrs. Brodts?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn? Yes, resolution two thousand twenty-two dash one zero dash three eight seven has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-two one zero three eight eight. Approval of revised job description for translator.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-two dash one zero dash three eight eight. Any questions or comments from the board?
I can comment, both of these just reflect our efforts to get more folks in classrooms, situations to help our EL students, as the population has obviously increased, and it forced us to look to make sure that we are putting the right structures in place, and this is a revision that reflects that effort.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mrs. Nusio? Mrs. Brodts?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn? Yes, resolution two thousand twenty-two dash one zero dash three eight eight has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-two one zero three eight nine. Approval of amended and revised Schedule X and S X. Schedule A, executive secretary salary and benefit schedules.
So, actually, no. Schedule X and S six, we, you said S X?
Oh, I'm sorry.
She said S X.
I read it.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, S six.
So you said three, yes, schedule X and S six.
Approval of amended and revised Schedule X and S six. Schedule A, executive secretary salary and benefit schedules.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Resolution, we have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-10-389. Mr. or Dr. Smiler, can you?
Yeah, I want to be very clear, this is very limited in its scope. This is nine employees that do not fall into OCS, they don't fall into our certified PEA agreement, and they also aren't building administrators who would be represented by APA, which is the Association of Parliament administrator. So it's nine people, four of those are secretaries, that was the S-six that you read. The others are the grants office manager, the database analyst, the computer applications manager, the financial data manager, and the production printing format for a wide number of reasons you can see why those people wouldn't fit into any specific employee association. I want to be extremely clear that this is not our building administrators, this is not deans, assistant principals, principals, et cetera, this is not teachers. It's limited to the administrative secretaries and the positions that I just outlined.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Nusio.
Mrs. Brodsky.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Siruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2022-10-389 has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss this evening, this will conclude human resources.
Anything, Mrs. Brodsky, fine job as usual. This brings us to policies, Mrs. Carpus.
I move to adopt resolution 2022-10-390, approval of the technical policy changes. Policy 0171, review of policy. Policy 0171.1, review of policy educational resources. Policy 0171.2, review of policy class of young adults. Policy 0171.3, review of policy community relations. Policy 1260, incapacitive superintendent. Policy 3531, unauthorized work stoppage certificate. Policy 4120.04, employment of substitutes, and policy 4531, unauthorized work stoppage classified.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-10-390. Any questions or comments from the board?
1260 is my favorite. That one is hilarious.
Is that the mean one?
Yes.
So just since you mentioned it.
It's funny.
If the board deems me incapacitated and I want to fight that and my doctor says something different, there is the clause to give a third opinion as to whether or not I actually have the mental capacity to complete the job.
Does Rashida count as a third opinion?
You're keeping these city doctors to play a part.
It's not the one I would select, it might be the one you guys would select.
All right, very good. Thank you. Ms. Nusio.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodsky.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2022-10-390 has been approved.
Unless any other board members have anything to discuss, this concludes policy.
Thank you, Mrs. Carpus, this came fast. So we do have some business with the board that, so for the 2022 OSBA Capitol Conference, we are to delegate and appoint some delegates for our business meeting. So tonight, we're appointing a delegate and alternate for this meeting.
I would like to be the delegate again.
Be the delegate, and who would be jumping in to help?
I am requesting Mr. Ruda, since he said he wanted to get a little more involved in this. And he's also going to dig into this platform with us here, so.
Good job, I mean, that's awesome. All right, so to note it that it's Mrs. Carpus and Mr. Ruda will be our delegates for the OSBA Capitol Conference. And then the next thing, the 2022 PTA scholarship commitment. We need to confirm our commitment to providing $600 to the fund this year to give 31,000 other Board of Education scholarships, which we will provide to the 2022 seniors this upcoming spring. If you've confirmed your commitment and do, we need to have the checks paid to Pam.
Oh, my God, tomorrow?
March.
End of March. How is this broken? How is this broken? So we have our checks by end of March to Pam.
Ah, yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Of course, so excellent. Any other information, qualified board members?
No.
So executive session, we don't need that today. I move to adopt resolution 2022-10-392 to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-10-392. We'll call Ms. Nusio.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodsky.
Yes.
Siruda.
Yes.
You may adjourn, thank you.